All right, good evening and welcome. Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to our first Board of Education meeting today is of 2022. Today is Monday, January 3rd. I'd like to start by reading our safety protocols. Before we begin the proceedings of our board meeting, I'd like to highlight our safety protocols and expectations. Based on the latest data, science, and guidance from the Kent County Health Department, we have extended the GRPS PK-12 mask mandate for all students, staff, and visitors until the end of the school year, regardless of vaccination status. If you are in need of a mask, these are available at the entrances. Public comment cards and meeting agendas are located on the tables within the board chambers at both entrances. Once you fill out a comment card, please submit this in the drop box next to the comment cards. Our board assistant will collect the cards when I call for public comment and deliver them to our board secretary. Individuals will be called up one at a time to address the board at the presentation table. On behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Lidrian Robey, and the Board of Education, thank you for being here and attendance with us. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our bed, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Lewis, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant?
Present.
Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Shaki?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
We have a form.
Thank you. May I please have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we will move into our election of officers. Today is our organizational meeting. And so we start this by accepting a nomination for the Office of Temporary Chairperson. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate President Shaki as temporary chairperson.
All right, thank you. Do we have support?
Second.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Great, motion carries. I will appoint Ms. Lewis as our temporary secretary. And I will move on to describe the nominations for board officer positions. We've received four nominations for the four positions. Nominated for the Office of President is Mr. Ross. Nominated for Office of Vice President is Mrs. Williams. Nominated for Office of Secretary is Ms. Grant. And nominated for Office of Treasurer is myself, Ms. Shaki. So we may proceed with a motion to vote for this slate, or we may take those as individual votes. So I will leave this open for a nomination.
I'd like to make a motion to support the entire slate in one vote, if there are no other nominations.
A second.
Very good. Let's call the roll.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
All right. All right. Well, congratulations, Mr. Ross. It is my pleasure to hand over the meeting to you. We will make our change, and Ms. Grant will change places with Ms. Lewis for secretary. Congratulations to all the officers.
Welcome back to the people. All righty, well, thank you very much. I guess it's time to move forward with the agenda. Celebrations, we have none. Do we have a report from our student rep today?
Yeah, so I guess as we come off these last couple of weeks of a much-needed break, the Student Advisory Council has similarly not met in the last couple of weeks, just as we take a break over the holidays, so not much to report on that end. But I guess as we go back to in-person school in the new year, just being optimistic about an ever-changing situation with the ongoing pandemic and everything with that, and just being optimistic about the educational opportunities we'll have going into the new year, and being able to be in person and all that provides for us. And yeah, just looking forward to what the new year has to offer for us.
Thank you. Next, do we have any public comment? Or any, Ms. Bowles, I don't see president, any GRA commentary? There being none, let's move forward then with the secretary's report.
All right. Today, I have the committee meeting scheduled for you all. During the board's transition, the 2021 committee memberships will remain intact for January 2022, and the following committee meetings are as scheduled. Academic Achievement will be meeting on Wednesday, January 12th, at 4:30 p.m. Policy Committee will meet on Wednesday, January 19th, at 5:00 p.m. And Finance Committee will meet on Monday, January 31st, at 5:30 p.m. All of those meetings will be held in the board chambers at the Franklin Campus Administration Building.
All right, thank you. I guess I probably, in relation to the committee meetings, I'll send a note to everyone for committees for this coming year and get your thoughts on that, and we'll have that said before our next board meeting. But like Ms. Christian just said, we're going to stick with those currently established times for now. And any, let's see, committee chair update from the Policy Committee?
We had a meeting in December, and we'll have another one coming up here in January. We're still working on two of the items that we talked about at a couple of other meetings, but we did finalize that last one, which we're going to vote on tonight about public meetings.
All right. Could you just tell us more about that when the time comes in?
Yes, I will.
All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Robey.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to all of you. We are very excited. I appreciate Mr. Chisholm's comments around the beginning of a new year. It's an opportunity to kind of start afresh and anew, and I know that especially as important as we look at our graduates of 2022, that they are looking forward anxiously to that next level in the next few months. Just a couple of quick things that we have. As you know, this is Board Member Appreciation Month, and I don't know that always our community understands all the work that our board members do kind of behind the scenes, after-hours, on weekends. And so we do have a resolution that we'd like to read, just again, to thank you for the work that you do as elected officials, but I think you're much, much more than that because there is a passion that is required of board members that, aside from being elected officials, you have a belief in public schools. And so we just want to acknowledge the work that you do and to say thank you. And so the resolution is as follows. Whereas the Governor of the State of Michigan has declared the observance of January 2022 as Board Member Recognition Month, and whereas the Grand Rapids Public School Board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers who consistently respond to the needs of their community, and whereas the Grand Rapids Public School Board members represent the voice of this community in serving the interests of our schoolchildren and preparing them for their future, and whereas the Grand Rapids Public School Board members continually strive for improvement and progress in education with the understanding of the need for commitment to change and growth, and whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of the Grand Rapids School Board deserve recognition for countless hours of public service to public education in this community, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lidrian Robey, Ph.D., Superintendent of Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby declare January 2022 as School Board Member Recognition Month in the Grand Rapids Public School District. I commend the board members of the Grand Rapids Public School Board for their dedicated service to the children of this community and urge all citizens to join me in demonstrating gratitude to these outstanding individuals. Be it further resolved that the student representatives to the board also be recognized for their dedication and service to the board in providing input on a wide variety of student issues in our district. Be it further resolved that this resolution is recorded in the proceedings of the board and a copy to be placed on file. And this is from myself, Superintendent of Grand Rapids Public Schools, on January 3rd, 2022. So again, thank you for your service. There's a lot of things that I know that each of you do above and beyond, and it is so appreciated on behalf of our school community, our 15,000 students, our 2,000 staff members, and our broader community, thank you for your service. Next, we will have a short presentation. We have just a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that we got in front of you. Just before our winter break, we were received notice that we had received a significant grant for Promise Zone, Promise Neighborhood Grant, and Ms. Bridget Chaney, who is the Executive Director of Elementary Programs and also School Partnerships, is going to come and talk to us about it. This came before, just before spring break, excuse me, winter break. I'm kind of fast-forwarding our school year already. And she wants to just give an overview, and as we get further into the school year, she'll will do a deeper dive, but we wanted to make sure that we explain what it is until you knew what was coming. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Chaney.
Thank you, appreciate that. Welcome, Happy New Year. Thanks for being here on this very cold day, Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, distinguished members of the board. And yes, I am talking about the Grand Rapids Southeast Promise Neighborhood Project, and it's very difficult now with the Promise Zone to try to keep them separate, but what's great is they're both good for kids, and the outcomes are tremendous for the southeast side of town, certainly for the Ottawa Hills feeder pattern, which is what this impacts. And so I'll just give you a brief little synopsis of it, and it is in your board packet. So anything that I'm speaking of tonight is certainly in your packet for you to review as well. One of the things that we're very proud of is WK Kellogg is with us on this journey. So while we do have this grant of roughly $15.5 million over the next five years, if we write a grant to WK Kellogg, they will match, as long as the outcomes are aligned one-to-one. So we're extremely grateful for that. The other beautiful thing about this is we're going to work very closely with GREA, and so making sure that we plan forward with them, our staff, our teachers, administrators, so all are on the same page. And we have community members that are involved in this as well. So there are 14 Cradle to Career solutions that have been identified, and our partners in the community are tremendous supports already, but we're going to further leverage them. They are subrecipients of the grant as well, but GRPS is the largest subrecipient, and again, $15.5 million roughly. And the partners, though, I certainly want to recognize because they're going to be in this journey with us or on this journey with us, Baxter Community Center, ELNC, Family Futures, GRCC, Grand Valley State, Kent Intermediate School District, Link Up, and of course, Western Michigan University is the grantee or the person or the entity that's accepting this grant, and then all of these others are subrecipients. So we're just so very excited. Board member Mrs. Williams has agreed to be on the advisory committee, so we're thankful for that. There is an advisory committee that is made up of community members, parents, and principals, and members of the working team as well, the implementation team. So we are excited to speak with community members, stakeholder groups, parents, to see how these 14 Cradle to Career solutions can best impact their children. So it is primarily the 49507 ZIP code, but those that feed into Ottawa Hills. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any questions or anything for Ms. Chaney?
I do have a question. Have those 14 solutions been identified already?
They have, yes.
Do you mind sharing some of them?
Oh, absolutely. They are improved prep and job-embedded professional development for child development, and they are early childhood engagement, increased access to engagement with early child education, certainly, improve medical services, implement intense focus on achieving early literacy success for all. And you'll see as these come through, they certainly go Cradle to Career, so the different entities that I mentioned earlier fall into the different solutions, which is fantastic. Enhance teaching quality, engage in data-informed decision-making for teaching, leading, and learning, create a positive learning environment, create and implement dropout prevention strategies, expand the use of school time and resources, raise student inspiration and experience with college, expand career exploration opportunities for students. And the other one is making sure that we are post-secondary opportunity for children, so.
Awesome. Thank you. And one more question. So with, this is a GRPS grant, and the other entities are partners, or is it kind of a grant for all of the entities?
It's a Western Michigan University grant, and then those listed are the subrecipients. So this is to better outcomes for the students who go through the Ottawa Hills feeder pattern, which is why we're the largest subrecipients, but the other partners do get a portion of the funding to help kind of wrap around, I guess is the best way I could say it, or join with us in doing that. So we are a subrecipient along with them. We just happen to be the largest subrecipient.
Perfect, thank you.
But Western Michigan is the person that...
You kind of mentioned it, but in terms of PDs for teachers, or how are you going to include the staff's development, the maturing in that?
Yes, so we're partnering with certainly the GREA, which will also bring along the other entities to support staff, custodial staff, operations, and things like that along with that to make sure, because we know that all hands on deck, right, when we're supporting students. So professionally developing all bargaining units and those who are not in a bargaining unit as well, working with them on the planning piece of it. This first year is a planning year, so we're going to take their input, make sure to plan with them so that we know exactly what they feel they need, and then what we know the data shows as well, and merge them together.
If I can just add to that, because we received a grant late December, and then we are starting kind of the planning process this month, and what the tenets of the grant means that we start the planning from January for implementation fall of this next year. So a lot of the stuff that we're kind of learning about, we are, it's still kind of brand-new to us, and so we will be taking this next six to nine months to do some planning. But I agree with Ms. Chaney that it's about engagement and all those different tenets around professional development, cradle to career, college readiness and such, making sure that we have a very comprehensive plan. And in addition to that, and one of the things that we were very clear with Western and also WK Kellogg, is that we wanted to make sure that they knew that we were in the process of strategic planning and that everything that we are doing moving forward should be aligned to our strategic plan so that we don't find ourselves in conflict of they have... And I mean, I think that the tenets will certainly align, but we didn't want to make sure that, you know, they were doing something opposed to what we were saying that we were doing, because we want to make sure that it is aligned for our work.
Absolutely.
Couple of questions, if I could. We wrote the grant, or is this grant...
In conjunction with Western Michigan. So they were the submitters of the grant, but got our input along the way, along with the other partners. So KISD, Link Up, ELNC, they had their portions as well. So yes.
Other wondering, on the partners, as they were proposed and selected, I noticed that we do not include such entities that serve a strong Hispanic population that we have in the area in those feeder patterns. And also, it refers to Native Americans, non-rural and non-tribal communities. I would imagine those are settled in, Native Americans that are present within our school boundaries. What are we doing to try to include, or is there opportunity to include, Native American and Hispanic entities that represent these communities in Grand Rapids?
Absolutely, yes. Apologizing, a very good question. And what we know is when we wrote the grant initially in 2015, 16, right in that period, the partners that are listed here were committed at that time, and committed also with WK Kellogg. So we knew that in the submission of this grant, there would be room for growth this next year as far as adding partners and things like that. But with the short window that we had, it was fantastic that we had kind of that template, if you will, knowing that this year we could bring them on and further employ others to join with us, or empower maybe even others to join with us in this effort, because you're right, they are represented in the Ottawa Hills feeder pattern. Yes, so certainly room for growth.
Yeah, that 49507.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Heavily Hispanic, and many natives, we have indigenous communities across the board, intermarried with Hispanic, African-American, and white. So I think we should recognize that inclusiveness.
Yes, agree, thank you.
Just a real, just a quick comment. I'm glad that you're including GREA, and I'm really happy that Mrs. Williams is going to be on the committee, because I think that for it to succeed, the community input is going to be really important, and I think that she serves a great bridge between all of the entities, so.
Thank you.
You mentioned matching, when you mentioned WK Kellogg, the 15.5. So this isn't a matching grant per se, but you did say something about matching.
Correct. So this is a standalone grant, but when we were writing for, well, when we joined with Western to write for, WK Kellogg said, "We believe in the Ottawa Hills feeder pattern so much and the community wraparound that this represents, we will match funds one-to-one if you write a grant specifically to us for whatever other services we can help to utilize in the making of this grant."
Okay, so WK Kellogg, seems like they'd be amenable to something outside of this 14, 15.5, if you're from a matching grant perspective.
Absolutely, yep. This amount of money is coming straight from the Promise Neighborhood Grants. Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Wonderful. It is very exciting. All right, next, we have Mr. Hemhold, who's going to give us an update around the launch of our new district website.
Excited.
Oh, I didn't mean to do that. Oh, it's the video mute. Hit the wrong button, Julie. I should have just waited for you.
It's okay. I was just going to make sure that we get some...
All right, you're fine. How can I always do this without the PowerPoint, too? So, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Robey, I am pleased to provide an update on the new GRPS.org website. Caitlin Kaliff, my partner in crime, who is almost wholly responsible for all of this great work, couldn't be here tonight, but I want to give her a special shout-out, as she is our still somewhat newly-minted webmaster and multimedia designer. So she has been trying to not only maintain the current website, but also building the new website and redoing all 44 brochures for the district, among many other things that she does. So we're getting close here, so I will proceed with an actual power presentation. As you might recall, we did put out, as part of Phase 1, was our research. Here we go. So our approach was kind of in five phases. Obviously, the first phase was around the CMS research and RFP. That was from February until August. We researched the top content management providers across the country. We had more than a dozen RFP responses. We did a comprehensive survey of our users to ask them what they think was working and not working, what they wanted to see in the new website, did an RFP to reflect that. And then in the end, we ended up choosing a locally-owned Grand Rapids, city of Grand Rapids-based business known as Fox Bright, that is very active in the school website community, not just in Michigan, but across the country. Phase 2, what did I just do here? Is when we start to kind of get into it. We hired Fox Bright. So what Caitlin has really been focusing on is building the skeleton, building the framework for what this is going to look like. I'll give you a little visual sneak peek here, but this priority is around ADA compliance. As you may recall, we have been dinged by the Office of Civil Rights with the current website that we have been updating and maintaining ongoing relationships. The OCR is very pleased with where we're at and encouraged to see the progress. We're going through and getting photos and other materials ready, including a new district-wide height video that you will see in the not-so-distant future, a number, we will eventually have at least 30-second to two-minute height videos for all 44 schools. We are also, we just finished getting the photos of all of the principals. So you are going to see a really new and improved, much more functional, user-friendly, customer-friendly, ADA-compliant website. We're also upgrading the calendars, the staff directories, and the district news, and kind of just organizing the backend. Phase 3, we originally had hoped to launch this on January 3rd, but because of COVID and because of the pressures on the school leaders and in the buildings, we did not want to be doing too much engagement, pulling individuals out of the schools. So we're doing a soft launch for staff-only between now and February, end of February. We're going to introduce them to this new website, the new content management system. We're going to get additional stakeholder input and user testing, and then obviously content improvements and refinement. The goal is to launch publicly in March and April. We'll have a comprehensive communications plan to go along with that, along with support and ongoing maintenance, as this is, schools will have to identify who their individuals will be assigned to maintain their individual school pages. Same is true for departments and programs. It's a train-the-trainer approach, but of course, we will provide technical support through Caitlin and my department, as well as through Fox Bright. And then we will also be engaging external stakeholders, many of whom completed the survey and expressed an interest in being part of some kind of an ongoing feedback for the new website. And then we're going to be doing some reporting and analytics. That's the beautiful thing about this, this new website has even more analytics that we can tie back. We are also going to be backend connecting them to our digital advertising and marketing campaigns, so we're going to be able to have a much greater connect between click-throughs from paid ads through our website with this new website. And then, of course, we will be delivering the OCR report to demonstrate that we are in full compliance. And this doesn't quite do it justice, but here, you get just kind of a sneak peek of how this is accessible on multiple devices. It will be far more user-friendly, and we're just excited to really do this soft launch, get staff engaged, and then to go public with it once it's ready. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Pretty exciting. I don't know, any questions for Mr. Hemhold?
Hopefully, I mean, I see communications happen through social media. I'm sure you're looking forward to a website that gives more information.
Yeah, no, this is going to bring us deeply into the 21st century. And you know, hindsight, I want to commend our former webmaster, Sam Mickens, as he was able to develop the original website using a free, open-source Joomla that didn't cost the district anything. And so I think that's to be noted, and again, that's evolved over time, and it's some older, not as user-friendly, but you know what, that did serve us well and was a job well-done, and now we're taking it to the next level. But there is a cost now, and there's an ongoing cost moving forward, so that's something we'll have to, we are building into my department's budget.
Just a couple of questions. So multilingual?
Absolutely.
I suspect that when you guys did the surveys, you came up with, you know, the top three languages or whatever, number of languages?
Caitlin has assured me, at least the language that are available will be nearly, if not all, of the 55-plus languages that our student body speaks. So I don't have that right in front of me here, but I know that is a top priority in the launch of this website.
And then as far as schools being able to tweak their particular schools, do they have a hand in that, or is that all centralized somewhere up there?
Yes, definitely will have a hand in it, in the sense that there will be an expectation that there is a staff person designated as the school webmaster. that there is a, a, a staff person designated as the school webmaster along with an alternate, possibly two alternates in the event that that individual's out. We, we will have parameters. They, there will be some school.
Tight and loose. Just call it as it is. It's what's tight and loose.
It's tight and loose.
We are talking about branding and so from one school to another, there should be, if you think about, you know, other companies where, and I'll just for lack of a, you know, like a grocery store chain, you would see the same type of branding. You know, it might be a little bit different from one store to another, but there's a certain branding. And so we have some things that we're tight on where it, it doesn't, it's not all over the place, but then how do each individual schools kind of personalize it so they're able to say, this is what's unique about our school, but there's some kind of standards around that.
That's, that's that wire framing I mentioned earlier where there, there will be certain content and some things that they can do. There will be checks and balances, meaning that when they could post something, but we as administrators could change it or pull it down. We're working on developing what is going to be the most efficient process for that? Because we want to provide a degree of autonomy, but we need to make sure there's quality control, that there's ADA compliance control. People can't just post random photos. They have to make sure they've tagged it, they've done all the things necessary to ensure it's ADA compliant.
Also, from a kind of a in-user standpoint, one to two clicks, that was one of the big things for us as we were talking about this and Mr. Helmhold and his team have been phenomenal about making sure as people put in tag words or certain things that it's only one to two clicks where you're able to get to that next destination. Because sometimes with websites or, or you have to do a lot of searching and hunting and pecking and that's frustrating for people when they can't find something easy. And so we want to make sure that it's one to two clicks and that should be our, our metric, so to speak.
Will there also be some sort of like check for, or expectation that each building is required to have updates so often, just to kind of?
So we get the tight and loose. So where we tight on how often you're updating and then, and then again, within that, because some people might want to do daily and that's not necessarily always going to work for every building, but then kind of a minimum standard.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
There should be a minimum of at least a couple of updates per month, but that's something we are going to be working with the user, we're going to meet with the schools to kind of determine what's reasonable expectation. I think there was some reluctance to continuously update because it was not as easy. This makes it so easy that it's copy and paste. And so to do an updated news story with a photo that's, you know, gone through the vetting process would be much easier on this site than our current site.
Right, but just to have some minimal expectations so that there's not one building updating every day and one never updating.
And, and we'd still have an in-house webmaster that can manage that or?
Yep, that's correct. Aside from the company. Well, Lynn, or excuse me, Caitlin is the main webmaster. Lynn is also trained, so she's able to, to make changes. And then of course, Fox Bright is on call basically 24/7.
All right, good deal. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing. Mr. Johnson, are you able to come and give just a kind of an update? I know that this will go into the consent agenda, but just related to our potential exciting new role and new position?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, other distinguished board members, and congratulations on your new appointments tonight. Just excited to bring information forward with our exultant and long search for an executive director of facilities and operations. And we're happy to announce that the district has extended an offer to Alex Smart, David Alex Smart, as the, as the potential executive director of facilities and operations pending the thorough background that we're conducting at this moment. Mr. Smart graduated with a Bachelor of Architectural Design from Andrews University. He's a licensed architect and he is currently the executive director of planning, design and construction at Tennessee State University. Prior to being, working for the Tennessee State University, he was the executive director for facilities and operations at Kendall College of Arts and Design of Ferris State University. And from 2004 to 2015, some of you may remember that Alex worked for the Grand Rapids Public Schools as our manager of design and construction of renovation and the design supervisor. So we're happy to, Alex has left and expanded his horizons and his opportunities and we absolutely excited about convincing Alex that this is a good place to be after just a very diverse group of candidates and just a long search of finding the right fit for the district. And so if things work out right, Mr. Smart will be joining us at the end of January as he and his family move back to the area.
All right.
So, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That concludes my reports. President Ross?
All right, we have three action items tonight. The first is approving the, what can I get a motion to approve the regular board meeting schedule for 2022? It was in your packet. No substantial changes, but it is in your packet and these are just our standard board meetings and that does not include the work section.
Motion for approval?
Support.
Ms. Grant?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
All right.
All right, and do I have a motion for tonight's purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Support.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And our final action item is the Bylaw 1370, public participation. Ms. Dawn Lewis, would you like to give us any, any background on that?
Yes, this, this is a bylaw and if you see on the first page, there are just a few changes made just as far as grammar and syntax and so on, but the biggest change is down on the bottom and the bottom of the order there because what it does is it defines the conduct that is normal for a business meeting, a school board meeting and no stopping of feet, pounding your hands or whatever, but people will be given three minutes to talk, to speak. When they are told that they have to stop, they must stop. And if that does not happen, the person may be asked to leave the meeting. So this sort of is in response to the climate that is out there in the world.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Lewis before we vote on Bylaw 1370? Can we get a motion for Bylaw 1370?
Motion to support the changes for Bylaw 1370.
Support. All right, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And then, and then we do have the consent agenda grouping. All that information in the packet. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
All right, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. Okay. And then we do have a motion to resolution, just 18, that was part of our consent agenda, was it not? Yeah, thank you. So we do have just a few discussion items. As far as our committee appointments, again, I'll send a, craft a note to everyone tonight to get your feedback and your preferences for committees this year. Again, as we alluded to though, for right now, the committees we were on for 21 will stay on for the duration of this month and stay with that regular schedule. Otherwise, as far as we have a discussion item, board president announcements, I don't really think I have any particular announcements. Other than the congratulations to everyone for, for their appointments and yeah, I guess that's really, that's really that really. So we'll just go ahead and go to public comment. Do we have any public comment for non-agenda items? I guess while we wait, I did rush through that a little quickly. Did anyone else have any discussion points for those things that seem like I went over as far as the committee appointments or the committee meeting schedule? Just wanted to make, all right, no, no agenda, no public comment for non-agenda items either. Superintendent comments for tonight?
All right. And again, congratulations to the new officers. I just wanted to share as we close out 2021, our district office staff also showed their generosity towards our community as a whole. We did an angel tree this past year and our goal was to have 50 donations. We received a total of 75 donations, which included 59 toys, 16 gift cards valued at $450 and that we raised nearly $2,000 for the children's kids food basket. And that was all due to the generosity of our colleagues and staff members here at the Franklin Campus. And I wanted to acknowledge them and to say thank you again for your generosity to our community.
Ms. Davis, may I start with you for board comments?
Yeah, I don't have much, just welcome back to all the students and staff and just good luck with the upcoming couple of months. I know that things are a little crazy with COVID right now and I just appreciate everybody giving it their all. That's about it.
Dr. Baker?
Yeah, just to, I want to congratulate everybody as the new officers and just some, just I'm glad that, that Mr. Ross is president and I know that his, his tenure on the board has been, he came on because we needed him to come on and he's been, and he's made the board better and the district better ever since and certainly has made me a better board member at times. So I appreciate that. Also, yeah, just to go along with what Ms. Davis said, it's just that, you know, just reading stuff, hearing messages, seeing notes about families, it's just, life is really tough for children right now and it's also really tough for the teachers and the staff that care for them and, you know, and just hopefully we can find ways to make life better for all of them.
Ms. Shaki?
Yeah, congratulations, President Ross and colleagues. I just want to express my gratitude to each and every one of you for the privilege of serving as board president over the last year. Truly has been yet another transformational experience for me in this community and in this role. So just so grateful for the opportunity to serve. And as the Uper on the board, get out in the snow and play. There's hope out there. It's the best time of the year.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, congratulations to all on your appointments. Looking forward to a really rigorous new year of our kids achieving and certainly our staff as well and our administrators. So thanks.
Ms. Williams?
No comment.
No comment. Dr. Flores?
Just optimistic for a bright and fruitful 2022. And so congratulations to everyone.
Absolutely. And Ms. Dawn Lewis?
I'd like to congratulate the new officers and I would also like to commend Dr. Roby for the importance that she places on keeping the board informed of things that are going on in the different schools and in the community and things that we should know about. And I think that is a wonderful thing for you to be doing and I hope you continue to do it because sometimes things happen and the rest of us might not know about it. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. And Ms. Grant?
Happy New Year. No comment other than that.
President Ross?
Yes, sir.
Do I have one more comment? I just want to thank you, looking forward and just congratulating those that are moving on and certainly you in this role. But I also want to, I was not thinking in the past when I made my comments, but I just want to make a point. Last year, Ms. Grant's last meeting was on Zoom. And this year, I don't want to, to not acknowledge the, the tough year that Ms. Shaki has led us through. Incredible. I think that Dr. Roby came in and needed extraordinary leadership from the board presidents and she got it in the last two presidents that we've had. And I have been just, you know, very impressed with the professionalism, the, the work that it took to make sure that everyone's voice was heard on this board. And I think that Ms. Grant did a great job. I think that Ms. Shaki did, I just, both, I mean, if you want to think about how do you be a school board president, the, the leadership that each of them provided and certainly Ms. Shaki provided this last year should be, should be viewed as a model.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, could we extend a comment opportunity for?
Have something like off, Mr. Jefferson? Sure.
I do not actually have a comment.
Just to be inclusive.
Well, I guess really just, you know, really echoing what Tony just offered at the end there genuinely to, to Christian and Jen, a fabulous job of leadership the past couple of years, very calm, thoughtful, still proactive and really just admirable really by both these. So thanks for pointing that out though, Tony, really. I guess while we give a shout outs, I got to give one to Sam Mickens. I didn't know he did all that work with a free website. I mean, my goodness. I mean, seriously, that's, that is generally impressive though, really, really. So, but no, just a lot of good things going on. So thanks, Ms. Cheney, for the update. That's exciting for sure. The website, that's exciting. Shout out to Caitlin, of course. And other than that though, no other comment from me. Meeting is adjourned.